I want to thank everyone for coming. Welcome to the Buffalo Bulletin's County Commission Candidates Debate. Lots of words there. I'm going to introduce our moderator, Mark Bentley. The Buffalo Bulletin Editorial Board devised the questions for the debate. Mark has agreed to moderate for the debate. And thank you once again for coming. Mark's going to explain the rules and then we'll get started. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening to you. We've done this before, except the spotlight was truly on them when we did the forums in Crazy Woman Square. It's much cooler and much more pleasant here. Thank you everybody for being here. The rules are pretty simple tonight. First of all, civility rules, as it did before. They will have one minute to open each, one minute to close each. You will have, each get one question, just one, which is a switch from the forum. And remember, this is a debate, not a forum, and there's a big difference. They will have 90 seconds to answer that question, no longer. Just as with the forums, I will attempt them all. Then each of the other candidates has one minute to respond to what the question candidate has said. Following that, the question candidate has 30 seconds to rebut it, period, and we go to the next candidate. Clear? Any questions? Good. All right. With that, if everybody is ready, let's get this show started. By the way, you will see in the back of the room that there are going to be two signs, one that is 20 seconds and one that says, "Stop."
It's red now.
And you get no five-second leeway. I will cut you off in the middle of work, just like we did in the forums, okay? All right. We are going to start first of all, and go down the line. We're going to start with Commissioner John Gibbs. Would you please come up? You have one minute for an opening statement.
My name is John Gibbs. I'm running for reelection to the office of Johnson County Commissioner. I've enjoyed the last four years of challenges and rewards as your commissioner and would look forward to four more. In the last four years, I've been heavily involved in the acquisition of Lake DeSmet, the purchase and resale of property to enhance the area around the airport, the multiple improvements in Johnson County Fairgrounds and Herald Park, a concentrated effort to be and stay involved in the Buffalo BLM Resource Management Plan, the new sports complex, the finishing details to the new Justice Center, the new Judicial Center, the acquisition of the old third grade school by the KDJ Joint Powers Board, the library expansion, and a multitude of other projects and programs to enhance the lives of as many residents as Johnson County as we can.
Thank you. That was quick.
Yeah, it wasn't a minute, I'm sure.
No, you're over one. All right. You might as well stay up there. Well, no, we're going to go on down the line. Gerald Fink, would you please come up? One minute.
Good afternoon, folks. Thanks for your time. My name is Gerald Fink, also a candidate for the office of County Commissioner. I'm running for the office because I have always held a desire to serve in the community, serve in the county that I live in. My career has been that in the jobs that I've held. I think that gives me a broad scope of experience to address the issues that face the county. As most of you probably know, I have served previously as a commissioner, and I think that experience will serve me well and serve the people of Johnson County. Thank you.
Thank you. One minute.
Hello, my name is Don Paulson. I'm running to be your commissioner, and I would appreciate your vote on August 19th. All their turnovers trying to call me to see if I was in there to show up. Apparently, when you're working in a gated community in Sheridan, Wyoming, and there's no power, you don't get out, so that's why I'm late. I grew up in eastern Montana, and a place a lot like Buffalo minus the trees, the creek runs through town, the mountains, and a beautiful lake outside of town. Our late night considered absolute privilege to live here. We've tried to be part of the community as best we could. Johnson County receives a great deal of their budget from energy. I spent 26 years in the energy business, 16 with an oil company, five with Uranium One, and five with MDU Resources. I received a paycheck, and now I sign paychecks. I spent the last 10 years owning my own business, and I would...
Time, thank you very much.
Thank you.
How do you do? My name is Linda Greenow, and I'm from Buffalo, Wyoming. I grew up here, I went to school here. I've been a teacher, a retired teacher. My parents lived here, my grandparents lived here, lived here, and my brother lives here still. I have a husband, Mike, two children, one living here, one in the sand hills of Nebraska on a ranch. I'm a conservative. I want to balance the budget. I have the time to do this job. I'm retired. I have no other interests or conflicts. I have no agenda. I attend all the meetings. I think I can hit the ground running if I'm elected. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bill Nivotny.
Good evening. I want to thank the Bulletin for this opportunity to address all of you tonight. My name is Bill Nivotny, and it would be my pleasure to serve as your county commissioner. I'm up here for one simple reason. It's time for new blood and new ideas as your county commissioner, who will work each day on your behalf. If you look at my resume, working for Senator Enzi on some of the most critical issues facing our state as an advisor to Governor Mead, as well as the State Treasurer, Mark Gordon, I have a unique experience resume that can be put to work each day for you. I'm a fourth-generation Johnson County native. I've worked as petroleum landman, as well as a community banker. I know how the economy in this county works. I know the budget process. I look forward to sharing my thoughts over the course of the debate with you, but the bottom line is, a vote for Bill Nivotny is a vote for good government. I look forward to speaking with all of you tonight.
Thank you.
I am Betsy Wilton. I'm not a native of Buffalo, but I am a native of Wyoming. I've been schooled all over the state because my father was one of the first groups of highway patrolmen. My son is here, and he is a sergeant in your police department. I skipped out, like many young people who didn't finish school, and went to Colorado, worked for a number of good companies, worked for myself for several years, and then I went to work for a company that was a multinational corporation. I am a paralegal. I know money management, business management, employees and employee law, and I would love this evening to serve you and Johnson County. Thank you.
Nathan Williams.
Hello, my name is Nathan Williams. I live in southern end of the county. I've lived there most of my 42 years. I've got a small, young family and live and work on a ranch, both of which keep me quite busy, and to be honest, I sometimes wonder how much room I'm going to have left. But the reason why I ran is more philosophically based, I guess you could say. You look at the country, and there's a lot of attitude that we, the people, are somehow subservient to the old levels of government, and I think that attitude has to change. And I also think there's more of a prevalent attitude as far as the government is there to provide for us, and that's not the case at all. The government is there to protect us from fraud and violence, and anything more takes away more than it gives. That attitude, I'd like to see that attitude grow from the bottom up and remind us what a real role and purpose of government is.
Thank you.
Rich Hall.
Good evening. I'm Rich Hall, running for Johnson County Commission. Thanks, folks, for coming out tonight. Thanks to the Bulletin for setting this up. Thanks to the moderator, the school district, and their wonderful chairman for allowing us to use this facility. I'm Rich Hall. I graduated from Buffalo High School in '75. My wife Christine was born and raised in Buffalo. We've raised five children here, in the process of one more. I'm a 35-year highway employee. I work for the Department of Transportation. I manage the roads and buildings in Johnson and Sheridan County. I firmly believe that that experience and background makes me uniquely qualified to serve Johnson County, and I'd appreciate your support on August 19th.
Thank you. All right. Now we get to the fun part, the questions. As I said, each of you gets one question. You have 90 seconds to respond to that question. The rest of the candidates then have one minute to respond, and you have 30 seconds then to rebut any of those responses, okay? First up is John Gibbs. Come on down.
I brought paper. I probably won't remember it.
Your question. You have claimed that Lake DeSmet is one of your crowning achievements as a county commissioner. Yet, when Lake DeSmet County's coalition began the process, you were against leases. Once the county acquired Lake DeSmet, you shifted in favor of the leases. And in a recent commissioners meeting, both you and Durbard I tell said you are still hesitant about signing the lease. How do you feel today about the lease and the status of Lake DeSmet? You have 90 seconds.
First off, yes, I was very influential in the Lake DeSmet process. When we first started the whole thing, the Lake DeSmet County Coalition was made up of a group of people from both counties, and it seemed like we were just running into problems, a lot of problems that we couldn't come to an agreement with, so we looked at a different thing, and they appointed myself and Mike Nicoletta, Sheridan, tried to come up with an answer. After the meeting, we sat down, and we hadn't sat down, and we came out there thinking, Sheridan County needs out of it. They really have no skin in the game other than some water rights. So Johnson County took over. As far as the lease itself, the 99 years, I just, I still haven't been able to really swallow the 99-year lease. But if things were to work out for us from a standpoint of financials, the money that we're getting from that, if we can get that invested halfway right, within a few years, we can go back and own that lake. That was one of the reasons that I still, that I was able to switch over and say, you know, if we can buy ourselves back out of that at any time, if we have the funds, then we'll do that. So that means I got 20 seconds left.
Yep.
Anyway, I think it's a great deal now. I'm happy with it. I think things are working well for us, and I think it was a good move. So with that, I'll quit.
Okay. Might as well stay there.
Okay. When we turn around?
Yeah. We only have one mic, so this is going to be an interesting challenge. Each of you now have 60 seconds to respond to what Commissioner Gibbs has said. Gerald Fink? Speak up so everybody can hear you, please.
Well, I guess my response would be...
I'm sorry, Carol, let me... Could they come up to the mic?
Yes. That probably would be easier.
Let's try to sit down.
With only one mic, it makes it a little more complicated. All right.
Okay. I was involved in dealings with the lake the first number of years that the county's coalition had the lake and initially involved when the lease with Game and Fish Commission started. The 99-year lease was always an issue with me. I didn't feel like 99 years was really a waste, that that was something that Game and Fish Commission would not weaken on. As time went along, the opportunity for that buyout thing was there. That softened that somewhat.
Thank you. Don Paulson.
So when do I do the 30-second rebuttal?
When we're done.
My memory's really awful.
Like I said at this town square, I'm against any co-ownership of Lake DeSmet. If you look up here on this table, there's about 20 bucks worth of bottled water, and it's a high value, it's a high commodity. The price, what's it cost for us to run the lake? You know, you've got to keep that in mind, but the water is invaluable. I don't want to share it with Johnson County. I don't want to share it with Campbell County. I want sole ownership of Lake DeSmet. We'll share all the recreation with those people, as hard as that is, but ownership of Lake DeSmet should stay in Johnson County.
I'm happy that we have the lake back in Johnson County control. However, during this whole process, there were some casualties because there were people working for that coalition that were paid by our county and Sheridan County together. They walked into a meeting thinking they had a job and left unemployed, and that left some very bad feelings towards our county. I don't think we can afford that. I'd like us not to treat people that way ever again. However, this is going to work out in spite of that. We have a new board. Mike Whitaker is the chairman. Bob Ralston is the vice chairman. Jim Feneman is treasurer. Cheryl Benner is taking notes free of charge. We have another couple of people. I think Dave Bellis is another one on there, and they're presently working with the Game and Fish to work out some shoreline management.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bill Nivotny.
I think a lot of the greatest reservation about the initial deal was the length of the weeks, and 99 years by anyone stretches a long time. My biggest concern, and I expressed this at the previous forum, is an unfunded liability for future generations. I think it is critical that we protect the agricultural water use in Lake DeSmet, as well as the recreation. Those are the two most valuable assets with Lake DeSmet. Down the road, if there's going to be any discussion on industrial development, that has to be secondary to protecting the ag water rights in that lake and the recreational opportunities. Now, I think it's critical that we take the $2.8 million that we received from the Wyoming Game and Fish, work with Wyoming's, our Johnson County's legislative district members to change state law so that we can invest that money with Treasurer Mark Gordon, return 5% or more on that money so that the lake can pay for itself. The lake should never become an unfunded mandate and a liability for the citizens of Johnson County, but we've got a gem out there, and we need to give it a bit.
Thank you very much.
I had mixed emotions about the lake and the ownership. I sat in on several of the meetings, not as a person, but as part of the county. I was sitting in for the county attorney. And I suppose the thing that bothers me the most is the amount of back and forth and arguing. They'd say they had it ready to go, then it wasn't ready to go. They bounced around until they finally came to an agreement, and we have that agreement now, and we have to live with it. We have all the maintenance, et cetera, for this lake, which is a big expenditure, and water is a very, very valuable asset. We have to find a way to make this work and not make our kids carry the load. Thank you.
Thank you.
I admit to not knowing the fine details about this, I will say that the closer we can get to controlling this, the closer the people we get, the better. But I will say there is a big difference between control and title, whether it's a lake or a piece of land. Just because you hold the deed or the title does not mean you control it. If you don't control it, you don't own it. So some care needs to be taken, a look into the fine print of this, to see where the control does lie. It needs to be with the people that are closest to it. There are some good points made as far as the liabilities, the financial end of it. It needs to be carefully considered. It should not be a burden, a financial burden on this county.
Thank you. Rich Hall.
I'm sure that the commissioner, including Mr. Gibbs, made the best decision that could at the time with the information that they had available to them. And I made a promise to myself early on in this race that I was not going to throw one of these folks under the bus to make myself look better, and I'm going to stick with that. But it illustrates a big difference because that was a fluid situation, a lot of changes, a lot of big changes, and they reacted as they went. I'm a firm believer in developing a strong vision and a strategic plan so that when those changes do come down the line, you can ask yourself, is this aligned with where Johnson County wants to go? And if so, let's move that way.
Thank you. John Gibbs. You have half a minute to...
Each one. On each one.
The whole thing?
I got half a minute to answer every one of these. Here we go. When do I start?
Right up.
Gerald Fink, great response. Don Paulson, I agree. Linda Greenow, the employee. That wasn't our deal. LDCC fired her. The county commissioner didn't. It didn't have anything to do with county commissioners, with their employees. Liability, Nivotny. Hopefully, we have support from the Wyoming Water Development and the state that the dam is threatened. Recreation, agreed. You should have been out there last week and seen the number of people. Great deal. Agriculture, very well protected with the water rights. I couldn't be happier there. Betsy, I couldn't hear what your response, anything of which she said. Nathan's deed was, yeah, we do have a deed, and Nathan, it's in the control hands of the people, but let's hope we make it all right. And Rich Hall, I hope I can return the favor by being kind to you. Thank you.
You guys have fun.
I have to give you a little bit more time to do that part. Next up is Gerald Fink. Third question, to which you will have 90 seconds to answer. You are running your campaign for County Commission on Fiscal Responsibility. Yet during your time as commissioner, the size of the county government grew threefold, including building a multimillion-dollar criminal justice center. How do you justify your campaign with that?
When I was first elected, the valuation of the county was, I don't remember for sure, it was a little under $200 million. Scarcely raised enough funds to maintain critical services in the county. There was a huge backlog of, I guess, call it deferred maintenance. The jail was one of those that was in a critical situation. We were faced with being sued by the American Civil Liberties Union. Had that happened, we wouldn't have had the choice to make a decision to build. We'd have been under a court order to build what the court told us to build. Granted, there was a significant amount of growth in the cost of government, but the county had the funds to do it, and they were things that were critically needed. There may be some debate about what was built, but I think if you got into it, it would have been difficult to have saved a whole lot of money and still built a building that would have served the purpose that needed to be served. The detention facility was built to accommodate some growth in the future. I've said several times, one of the things I didn't want to do was build something that in five or 10 years had to come back to the people in the county and said, sorry, folks, we didn't build it big enough, and go into another expensive expansion project.
Thank you. You get to go.
Now, I got a minute, or I got a minute. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. From the time Gerald took over, it was at $200 million, I think, the highest. I can't remember what the highest I saw was, but it was a million five or six. It was way up there. And then downs back down. Last year, we were at 750-something. Now, we're at 850. We're up about 10% from last year. When Gerald did that, there were some laws out there that were scaring the people with us, that we had to do something. So I agree with what happened there. The architectural design was where the problem came in, in a lot of people's eyes, and I suppose, yes, we could have built a flat-roofed brick building, but I do think it's got some eye appeal. Maybe the budgets were of such that we could hand-lap. I'm not sure, but at this point, I'm proud of the buildings, and I'm going to try to do the best I can to keep them running. Thank you. If I'm elected.
Well, one thing I'm thankful for is it's paid for, and I'm thankful for the insight that went into that, that that building is paid for, not using debt to pay for it. So I'm thankful to the county commissioners for that. If you were down at the old jail, you saw, now, this could set me up kind of, if you were down at the old jail like I was down at the old jail, spent a little time with Coles Checker, but if you were down there, you saw the problem that was there. There was file cabinets everywhere, and so without argument, that was a need, and the lawsuits and everything else made it a need. So that's not even an argument, but the argument is going to come, and I'm curious if there was a mandate, and this is a question for the county commissioners who had part of this, if there was a mandate in the architectural design of that, is there a government mandate for a certain amount to be spent for that? Because that is the argument. I said at the last debate, let's cut the top off the courthouse and give the county employees a raise, and that's what was meant by that. Thank you.
Thank you. Betsy Wilton, or pardon me, Linda Greenow.
I've never been to jail, but I think we paid too much for this one. We had to do something. Gerald is right. Gerald is right. Our others was in disrepair. I think we had several other options, and we're not done paying for it. We have garage doors that won't open and close that they've tried to fix. We've got a Sally door that's made of aluminum that falls off the tracks constantly and even more often when the wind blows. And we've had software problems from the get-go, and there are five different computers in there that need different software. We have a generator that's cracked. And if you want to meet your sheriff, when the wind is blowing a little bit on Wednesday, go out there because his office fills with carbon monoxide when they test the generator. When it's not blowing, the jail cells fill. So we have some problems still, and it's still costing us money. Thank you.
Thank you. You'll move on.
Well, there's no question that hindsight's always 20/20, and certainly, we all agree that new facilities needed to be built. The question is, did they need to be built that often? But what we need to get down to is fundamental thoughts on government here. The county's valuation is going to increase as oil production moves into the southern half, up from Commerce County. We need leaders in there who can resist the temptation to grow government. We've got to hold the baseline so we don't add any new liabilities to the budget. At this point, I think that we've got enough county employees. We need to make sure that they're properly compensated, and we've got to resist the temptation of adding new facilities. Doesn't mean that we can't look at the library and some of the projects, but the bottom line is, we've got to hold the growth on government as our county valuation creeps up. It's that baseline budgeting principle. Hindsight is 20/20, and it's easy to criticize the decisions that were made on those previous construction projects. We're forced to live with them. We can't make those same mistakes.
Thank you. Now, Betsy Wilton.
There are certain federal mandates, excuse me, that are necessary, they think, but they put them in place, and the jail has to follow them. It is true that had we not built the building, the county would have been sued, maybe multiple times, depending on how many prisoners decided to file suit. I don't believe that it needed to be that grand, but we did need a building that would allow for growth. You don't want to build a new building every 10 years. So I think that we're stuck with it as it is, and we need to try to support the people there, back them up, and get their facility fixed to where they needed to be. Thank you.
Nathan Williams.
As I've said here, this, and you know, I've heard of the need for the jail, and like it was a genuine need, but one of the things I also heard was, it seemed like part of it was done underneath a threat, threat of being sued by ACLU, different mandates that had been met. That may be well and true, but why were they there in the first place? And what can we, the county, do to untie ourselves from those threats, those mandates? Were those mandates tied to maybe some funding the county got? Well, maybe take a look at it. Do we need to separate ourselves from that funding so we're not committed to those mandates? These are all things I think we need to take a serious look at. As far as the valuation, we can't just go out and building bureaucracy and infrastructure as the valuation goes up and down because the costs go on regardless of what the county valuation is, regardless of what the county's bankroll is. Thank you.
Thank you. Rich Hall.
Projects of this size should go before the builders. They should make those calls. That's a lot of money. As a commissioner, that should be your guiding light, what your constituents want. On a bigger picture, I think this is a case where my background and experience would be helpful in projects of this size. I've dealt with architects. I know how to read a set of plans. I've been to countless plan reviews. I know how to deal with contractors. I know how contracts are set up. I've managed contracts. So looking forward rather than backwards, that's a beautiful facility. We're going to maintain it. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we've got everybody, right? You get to come back up, and you have 30 seconds. Maybe I'll give you 45 to respond to all this. I need more time. You just didn't know.
Well, I don't know if it's, is it real that we respond to everybody? I hope not. Picking up on Don Paulson's comment about the debt, I think one of the great things about the projects that have been done, both the justice center, the upgrades that we've done at the Roden Bridge Department, did not leave the county with any debt. Linda commented on the problems of the building, and that's unfortunate, but I think anytime you go into a building project as complex as this, there's going to be problems that have to be corrected.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry. It's hard to respond about these things in 30 seconds, but otherwise, we're going to be here tomorrow. Don Paulson, you're up. You have a minute and a half to answer the following question. Are you presently comfortable with the departmental county budgets? If no, explain where you would make cuts. And if you are, considering the boom and bust nature of our economy, if revenue falls, where would you make cuts and why?
You know, I said this at the last meeting. When you're looking at revenue, when you're looking at revenue streams, I think you have to be really careful when you're, when you're, when your household has a lot of money, you know how easy it is to spend it, don't you? I mean, look at all the money we have. Look at here. Let's go buy this. Let's go buy this. And it takes extreme discipline not to do that. And it takes extreme, because everything that we built, I mean, the understanding is, did we need that? Yes, we absolutely needed that. But there's an understanding of an ongoing cost of all of that. And I personally believe government doesn't have money. Government doesn't have money that doesn't belong to you already. As far as the departmental budgets, I think we have department heads, and like I said last time, I'm a firm believer that people are your greatest commodity. And those heads are given budgets to work with, and the oversight of the county commissioners is hugely valuable, but there's a trust factor that happens there. So the balance between, you're going to hear people talk about this, but the balance between growth and holding the line is a very delicate thing because you don't want to, I mean, you want to expand opportunities for young people. You want to expand opportunities for your kids, but you want to live in the same town you've lived in for 30 years. And that takes, that takes a lot of...
Thank you.
Discipline.
Thank you.
Okay, go get a tiger.
All right. John Gibbs, you get to come back up, and you have...
You know, Don was actually very well spoken, in my opinion. Balancing that fine level between building infrastructure, but keeping a handle on the cost of that infrastructure is a very, very tough deal, and I guess each person handles it in a different way. I felt very comfortable in the last four years with our budget deal. We spend a lot of time going over those budgets, leveling them out. In fact, tomorrow, with a little bit of luck, if there was some wood here, we'll level that budget. We'll okay it tomorrow for the next year. I think Don's responsible is good.
Thank you. Gerald Fink.
You know, budget management is an interesting thing. There's a certain part of the population that doesn't think that the county should spend any money, another part of the population that thinks you ought to spend more money than they have. It's difficult to stand here and say what I would cut. I have to believe that there are some opportunities to improve efficiency in departments, and it needs to be looked at, department by department. One of the things that I've commented on previously is I think we need to guard spending cautiously. There are certain things that have to be done. We need to sort out wants and needs.
Thank you. All right, Linda Greenough.
The commissioners have been working on the budget at their meetings for weeks now, John, weeks, and they've been very careful about what they're spending money on. I think they've gotten some feedback. Departmentally, I would have the heads of the departments come to the budget meetings and tell us where they can make cuts. The auditor has already told me she's made cuts. Roden Bridge takes some money. Scott has several different plans. We probably won't be hiring anybody new. We'll just do interdepartment movements and keep our benefit packages. There probably won't be any raises. And there won't be any new projects that aren't on the ballot if I'm elected. Thank you.
Thank you. You'll move on.
Overall, this gets back again to a philosophy that I believe very deeply, and that's the process of baseline budgeting. And just because your budget was at this level this year does not mean that it needs to be at that level next year. I think if we delve into these budgets, and the first person that should be involved in that, of course, is the agency head or the fellow elected official who oversees their office, because they should be the ones that are setting their own budgets. But we need to look for savings within there. There's been a good move within the county to move projects over to the capital construction area that don't belong in the traditional budgeting process. I also believe that we need to look at some cost savings within that. We don't work across scale, similar to what the school district does, to take advantage of our bulk, whether it's buying paper, computers. So there's a tremendous amount of savings that can be found in there, but it begins with baseline budgeting and involving the department heads. Thank you.
Thank you. Betsy Wilton.
When I worked for the Sweets, they were very frugal people, and I had to prepare a $12 million budget for five departments. And when the budget would come back not approved, we had one particular year that we had to look at everything. So myself, the five departments I had, I had to look at each of those. And one of the things that we did, which you don't really like to do, but if a company or a county is in a very bad position, we put everyone in a room and took a vote, and the employees voted to each take X number of days' furlough to make up that amount of money that we were over so that no one lost their job. And there are things like this that can be looked at as well as digging into their other resources.
Thank you. Nathan Williams.
This is one of those subjects, it's easy to say the right things, it's a lot harder to do the right things. As Daniel Webster put it, "It is hardly too strong to say that the Constitution was made to guard the people against the dangers of good intentions." And I think that's something we all need to think about. My philosophy again is the government is there to protect, it's not there to provide. Because of that, I have a pretty narrow focus of what, where money will be spent, new projects such as that. As far as the specific budget, I'd have to look at it and go through with a fine-toothed comb and see where those standards met. Thank you.
Thank you. And Rich Hall.
The biggest costs to the county are salaries and benefits, and that's people. So you need to be really careful when you look at riding the wave of boom and busts because it's easy to fall in to the temptation to bring more people on, provide more service when times are good, cut service, cut people when times are bad. And again, I hate to harp on planning, but I'm a planner. If you have a vision and a plan in place, and you're providing a steady level of service, you're running mean and lean with your employees, you can weather those boom and bust times and still provide the level of service that the people of Johnson County expect.
Thank you. Paulson, you go on to that.
If you told your kids, I'm going to go to Casper and buy you a new pair of shoes, and you and your husband or your wife go to Casper, and you stay at a motel, a real nice motel...
Thank you.
And you stay at a real nice motel, and you eat the best meals, and then you come home and you tell your kids, sorry, we couldn't buy you new shoes. That's not right. Okay, if you ask me, what am I going to cut? I realize, Rich, you've got to be careful doing that. And I will cut where things need to be cut, at times that need to be cut, but we have to be very careful in building and building and building, and then telling people, hey, we can't afford you. I mean, it's our responsibility to take care of the people that we employ, so I don't want to tell the employees of Johnson County, sorry, we went to Casper and all this crap.
Thank you.
Can I say that?
You just did. All right. Linda Greenough. You'll have 90 seconds to answer this question. County government consists of over 15 separate departments, some of which have department heads who are directly elected by the people of Johnson County. How would you most effectively manage those departments to ensure the taxpayers receive the very best government? Please speak specifically about the departments with elected officials as their head. You have 90 seconds.
Well, thankfully for the Board of Commissioners, the people of Johnson County are very savvy about electing their officers. Each department is headed by, well, not each, but some departments are headed by elected officers, the treasurer, the clerk, the assessor, the county attorney's office, the sheriff. And the people of Johnson County have done a pretty good job with electing these people. Occasionally, we have to step in as commissioners, or they have to step in as commissioners and make suggestions, or flat out say, no, you may not have that, you may not do this. But on the whole, our elected officials have done a very good job. They manage their own personnel. They submit their budgets on time, and they're very responsible to the people of Johnson County. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's start back where we always do. Why not? Answer your doubts.
You know, Linda, thank you. Here, here, I am a big fan of our county officials that we have to work with every day, and we haven't had a lot of problems. I think everything's running pretty smooth that way, so I don't have any rebuttal. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Gerald Fink.
I think the question was how, how commissioner, how as commissioner would I manage like 15 departments?
Especially those with elected officials.
I think the key to that is good communication. I think you need to keep an open line of communication, be able to visit with department heads, have them feel free to come in and visit with the commissioners, treat them with the respect they deserve when they do come in. with the respect they deserve when they do come in, and communicate what's going on in their department, and maintain an environment where we can talk about the problems and back and forth and come to solutions.
Thank you. Don Bolson.
Just shortly, the Commissioner's job is oversight. I mean, it's oversight, but you elected people in these positions, so it's kinda oversight on your part, too. I mean, you've entrusted and empowered the people that you've elected to do the job that you've elected them to do. But again, the Commissioner's job is oversight. And I'm always on the side of empowering people in the jobs. Any people that are part of a project, part of a, whatever that level is, I believe in empowering people to do the job that they were meant to do until it doesn't work. And once it doesn't work, then it's the job of the Commissioner to step in and fix whatever that problem is. And I'm honored to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Go move on.
Now, really, it's my turn, but more than anything, it gets back to treating those other five elected officials with the respect that they're due, we should receive from the office they hold. It's imperative that you keep open lines of communication, because there are going to be situations where you will step into that role, and whether it's making a decision on the board of equalization, approving their budget, but most importantly, with those five other elected officials, whether they are in the courthouse or over in the new building, they must be treated with the most respect. Now, when it gets down to those agency heads, my philosophy always is empower, don't micromanage. We have outstanding department heads. If we allow them to do their jobs, not interfere with their daily operations, we can serve the people of this county. Thank you.
Thank you. Betsy Willoughby.
I believe we have some very good elected officials right now. And the commissioners, I think they should have oversight over everything. I would suggest that perhaps on a monthly basis, it would be good for commissioners to meet with each department head and just get an update on what's going on. If there are problems they need help with, we should help them. If there's nothing going on that they aren't able to handle, then we should leave them alone and let them do their jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. Mason Williams.
Communication's mentioned, and respect, and that's very important. Discipline and accountability, you know, anybody in leadership positions gotta make sure that the job's getting done. You have to be willing to delegate authority to where it needs to be delegated, but in the end, it does, it comes down to the voters, the elected officials, anyway. It's, we the people are the ones who decide if a good job is being done or not. So there again, I think it's accountability and make sure that an open line of accountability and communication is maintained. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Richarlison.
I take exception a little bit to the question, because I don't think it's a Commissioner duty to manage the office of the assessor or the treasurer. You folks elect people to do that job for you. The Commission does set budgets for those agencies, and I would look at that as an opportunity to sit down with those folks and start building a relationship and educating myself on what goes on in those departments so that I can better serve them. And...
Thank you. Your turn.
My turn again.
Your turn again.
Darren, thank you for reminding me about communication, because good communication is good from around. And Betsy, we do meet, we act like I'm already elected. The commissioners do meet with the heads, and it's more often than once a month. They see them quite often, in fact. And thank you all for bringing up not micromanaging workers. It's real hard to keep hiding around when you're on somebody all the time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Bill Manotti. You'll have 90 seconds to answer this. Johnson County has roughly $20 million in reserves. How should those reserves best be managed in light of the capital facilities needs of the county? Please outline your plan.
Well, first and foremost, I do not believe that we should be tapping any of our rainy day accounts. It's imperative that we have at least between five and seven years' basic operating expenditures in reserve in the event that we had a major downturn in our valuation, so that we could continue to fund the county and meet our public safety and infrastructure needs. Once we feel that we have adequate money within those reserve accounts to meet the long-term needs of the county in the event of a drastic drop in valuation, I believe in infrastructure. First and foremost, we have county roads that must be maintained. That is critical for public safety, it's also critical for commerce. Once we've looked at those, we need to prioritize long-term needs within the county. Certainly, I wouldn't be in favor of bringing any new major capital construction projects online without first going to the ballot for approval. Certainly, I think that should happen for the library. I also believe that should happen for the YMCA. When taxpayers have a say in where those dollars are going, there is accountability. At that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Come on down for your face time.
Bill does a pretty good job of speaking, it's hard to follow him. And he's right, and we've maintained that in the last three or four years since I've been there, and that budget, that reserve's stayed about the same, and we try to plan ahead. This year, we were fortunate enough to put together some, what they call a capital improvements program, and where we look out three, five, and seven years, so we can see that stuff starting to come, and that will hopefully answer Bill's question, so that as that comes forward, they will know that it's coming, and will hopefully be able to set money aside, or flat say, "It's not gonna happen this year, we don't have the funds." But at least we're seeing that stuff come. So the library and the wire probably, the next two, you'll see come, so thank you.
Thank you. Darryl Fink.
I think Bill's comments are pretty well on track as far as how you deal with the reserve. I'll go back and say that I served as Commissioner during a time when there was hardly such a thing as a reserve. One of my goals back then was to have some type of a capital improvement fund that could address needs as they come out, but there was never funding to do that. The county's in a unique position now to be able to set aside funds in a capital improvement or capital facilities, fund and project out some long-term planning, and that's probably a thing to do.
Thank you. Don Bolson.
I guess I would ask the voters of Johnson County, how do you deal with your reserves? Because they're your reserves. First of all, we stop crazy spending. I mean, you have to, we are so blessed in Johnson County to have all the amenities that we have. We are blessed above and beyond, and we're, really, we're spoiled rotten, and we are. We have a lot of the best of the best of things. I lived, I told you the town I lived in was just like this, but minus all this stuff. And that's how it is. We've become pretty spoiled in this county, and we kind of expect that. But the discipline comes from you as well. Really, it comes from you ultimately, because you need to elect somebody that's gonna have the discipline to stop and not just feel like he can spend anything that he wants of...
Thank you very much.
...your reserves.
Thank you. Linda Green.
We need to keep our reserve as a reserve. We have full liability of things like Lake DeSmet. If the dam should go out, we would need that money to replace it. One of the projects that the commissioners have started, or Mr. Hicks has started, is visiting with Mark Gordon on how he has taken state funds and invested them to make them grow. And Mr. Hicks has not reported back yet at the meetings on how his visit with Mr. Gordon went, but I think that's an idea well worth looking into. Thank you.
Thank you. Betsy Willoughby.
$20 million in reserve. It should stay right where it's at, or at least not be used for anything project-wise. Perhaps some of it could be invested. Perhaps when we have these valuation changes, more money could be put into that fund. Because as I see it right now, all it would take would be perhaps a lawsuit, a break in the dam, just a weaken the dam, a disrental the employee who decides to sue. It would only take two or three things to totally blow $20 million. So I think it needs to be looked at to see how we can make it grow. And you all should have some say in what happens to and with it.
Thank you. Mason Williams.
I can, excuse me, I can see and appreciate the need for rainy day-type contingencies. And Don, I appreciate what you said. This is, these reserves are your money, but I'd like to expand upon that a little bit. It's your money, why does the county have it necessarily, then? Beyond the rainy day fund, I strongly think that that money would be much better served if it was in private hands, if it was in private resources. That money would be a lot more productive, I think. So when there are such surpluses like that, that's what needs, leads to these unnecessary spending. And again, it gets back to, it's your money. And again, I think that money would be much better sent if it was more productive, if it was handled by private resources. Thank you.
Thank you. Richarlison.
Surprise, surprise, I'm gonna hit planning again. But I really think that you need to be purposeful with the dollars that you expend every year. It's easy to lose track of dollars if you don't have a specific plan for them. I've been part of a governor-sponsored efficiency review for the last four years, and what we've done at the state level is break down each of our processes that expend dollars, or man-hours, which are dollars. And we've looked at those and tried to devise a way to become more efficient with those. It's pretty painless, and we've actually been able to come up with some strategies to save taxpayer dollars.
Thank you. Okay. Come on back up, Bill. You have roughly 30 seconds to respond to these comments.
Well, first and foremost, I would remind everyone that the county does outlay a large amount of money each year to pay for liability, so we shouldn't look at long-term lawsuits as a threat to our reserve account. That's why we pay for that liability insurance. Bottom line, I am committed to holding the baseline on the growth of our county budget and the growth of county government. And I also pledge that I will work day and night to get the legislature to change the law so that we may receive a greater return on our investment, should we choose to take either the Lake DeSmet money or part of that $20 million reserve, so that we can get that 5%, 6% historical percent. It's critical that we are good managers of our money, and we gotta hold the line on that budget. Thank you.
Okay. Betsy Willoughby, come on down. Over the last four years, there's been hostility bubbling beneath the surface in many of the county departments. In an interview, you said that you have witnessed some unprofessional behavior within the county departments. What do you feel the source of the hostility is, and how would you best address it as a county commissioner? You have 90 seconds.
I have witnessed what I consider very unprofessional behavior, where people are actually yelling at one another, or one person's yelling at another person who's not responding. There is no place in the county commissioner's board where any of that should be happening. We're all adults, we shouldn't behave like children. And there is a recurrence of people stepping over the line into someone else's particular area of expertise. They shouldn't do that. Department heads take care of their department, period. And if I was a commissioner and saw this going on, I would be having some serious discussions with whoever that was who was doing it. We all need to be civil and respectful to everybody, to each other. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gibbs.
I gotta tell you, this being first is a real disadvantage. I get 30 seconds to think, too. That's not very good. You know, not knowing exactly what she's referring to, it's hard to respond to that. Sure, there's always personality rubs. We had a tough election when I was elected, there was some real tough stuff came out of that. You know, we hope we can work through it, and it seems like we are, seems like things are smoothing out up there, but I don't know that, without any real specific instance, she may be referring to me on a couple of times. I found myself with the hair on the back of my neck standing up, and I probably didn't respond wrong, but we all have some holes in us, so if I'm that person and I did that, I apologize. As far as how we smoothed that out, I guess we just keep trying to communicate more together. Thank you.
Thank you. Darryl Fink.
I think Betsy probably responded to that question rather well. The only thing I would add, I guess, is my approach would be, again, communication and leadership. I think you need to develop the expectation that people are gonna act maturely, and with respect to their fellow workers, fellow elected officials, and that would be the beginning of creating that atmosphere of cooperation. Thank you.
Thank you. Don Bolson.
Jan Johnson would be mortified if she knew I was gonna use her name here. My daughter played volleyball for Jan, and a poor attitude just wasn't tolerated. It just wasn't. I mean, if you were on the team, the expectation level was set at this level. And I think that's how it is in any group of people. The expectation level needs, the bar needs to be pushed up a few notches. And I don't scream, I'm not gonna scream. I'm not a screamer. And I, I've seen big deals in life. I've seen things worth screaming at. Most of them aren't the things that we invest in. So I would say that, set the bar a little bit higher, set the expectations higher. And, and I think that starts from leadership and it starts from the top.
Thank you. Linda Greenham.
I like to think I treat everybody with courtesy. But I will tell you right now publicly that I will never publicly or privately embarrass or humiliate anyone. Rudeness in my administration will not be tolerated. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Lavalle.
I'm gonna approach this question in two parts. First, with the constituents, which are you, who would like to come in and address the commissioners. It should be open and accessible and you should never feel intimidated to come before your commissioners to share your thoughts and concerns. It's a matter of constituent services. You, the people, elected them. We, the commissioners, serve you. Second part of it, uh, whether it's the lowest-level county employee right up to the other five elected officials, they must all be treated with the utmost respect and courtesy. They have important jobs to do for the taxpayers. Just because you sit in the commissioner's chair does not make you any better than the custodial staff or the other elected officials. We got to treat the constituents, which are you people, the way they deserve to be treated. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, come on down. Nathan Williams.
You know, it all boils down to respect and civility, um, and accountability, and most of all, being accountable to yourself. There's no, uh, no need for any of the yelling and berating. I don't know if any of that took place or not. But in any circumstance, whether it's at a commissioner's meeting or dealing with your family, that nothing productive ever comes from that. I, I, uh, look to my grandfather, who I respected more than any person in the world. And he never raised his points once in his, his whole life. Yet he commanded respect. He was a true leader. So, uh, just be civil. But stand for your principles and remember, you gotta run into them in the small community down the street somewhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Rich Hall.
The climate and culture of respect doesn't happen by accident. Uh, when it's lacking, uh, it's because people built it that way. When it's good, it's because people put the time in and build it that way. I am current chair of a board of nine with eight other very strong opinionated, uh, people on that board. Uh, but we've built a culture where we can question each other. Uh, we can debate, we can discuss, much like we have with these seven folks. So it's something you have to work on every day.
Thank you. All right. Betsy Willoughby's rebuttal.
Sorry. I personally believe in leading by example. And I tried very hard to do that. I'm not in a managerial position now. But when I was, I tried to lead by example. I did not ever berate anyone in front of other people. I never yelled. You try to make everyone calm and comfortable, get your points across. You're not gonna like what everybody says. You can't make everyone happy. But I think that you can, by example, build up a very good working communication with just about anybody.
Thank you. Okay. Nathan Williams. Come on down. You have said in the KC community voice that you would not be able to devote full-time to the position of county commissioner. Considering this is roughly a sixteen million dollar operation, which makes it easily one of the largest businesses in the county, how would you propose that you prioritize your time to make sure the taxpayers are best served? Ninety seconds.
That's a, a, a good question. And, uh, you know, that's one of the things that vexed me this whole time. Because I do, I have a lot of demands on my time. Uh, I've got life that I love, got a family that I love that demand a lot of time. And I'll be honest, they're gonna come first. Um, I would do what I could for the county. As far as what the people expect, you guys are the voters. You guys are the ones that need to set the bar. If I don't meet them, by what I'm said here, don't vote for me. By all means. We need more educated votes, whether it's for this commissioner's spot or any spot. And that's why these venues like this are so important. Uh, I wish this room was packed to the brim twice over. That is a good question. And it's hard for me to exactly answer it because, uh, I'm stretched pretty thin. And, uh, the people of this county deserve the best that they can get. And so go out and educate yourself and vote for the person that you think is the best that you can get. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Here we go again.
Number one. You know, I, I will say one thing, Nathan, that in the four years I've been here, in, in, in the Board of Commissioners, they cover for each other. We, we try our best to help you. But I would also say that to any of the other candidates. Um, it's gonna take, if there's a learning trial, yes, there can be a lot of time. Don't want I to burn the wheels off of a suburban back and forth all the time. But he cared and he worked at it and it was, it was tough. But, uh, Nathan, all I can say is, uh, I wish you the best of luck and help you all I can.
Thank you. Gerald Fink.
I will need one.
Well, time commitment. The first time I ran, I had a sitting commissioner at that time say, "You only have to attend two meetings a month." Yeah, right. Um, it does take some time. Um, I guess the positive thing is that there's some flexibility in some of it. Sometimes you have a little control over when you spend the time. Of course, there's meetings that come up. There are meetings other than the regular commission meetings that are pretty essential that you become involved in in order to understand what's going on. Um, it does, it takes some time. It's probably not, I wouldn't call it a full-time, uh, job. It isn't gonna require eight or ten hours a day.
Thank you. Dawn Paulson.
The expression is, "Life is like a coin. You can spend it any way you want, but you can only spend it once." Time management is an issue for all of us. I mean, I don't care if you can. It's tough, Nathan. It's tough for all of us. And if you're my customer waiting for me to get to you, I apologize. Because it's tough. Managing time is tough. I'm fortunate because my kids are grown and gone and now we just have to hang with the grandkids. But having kids and having jobs and having, uh, community service basically is a, is a hard mount. And Nathan, you're not the only one that faces that.
Thank you. Linda Greenham.
I'm very fortunate that I'm retired and I have time to put forth to this job. But please let me assure you that Nathan is a bright and energetic young man. He can handle the job. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Lavalle.
I think it all overall gets down to, uh, time management, the ability to, uh, juggle multiple tasks, which whether it's serving on the various boards and commissions, attending the regular meetings, that you just have to make that a priority. Uh, it will be my priority. It'll take precedence over my consulting business or the capital that I run, uh, down in Casey with my cousin. I will be committed as your county commissioner. But I resist the thought that you must be retired and not have kids in the community. I think we need young people, not only on our county commissioners' board, but our city council and all the boards and commissions across this county. We bring a little bit different perspective. We have a little bit of different thoughts on what is valued, uh, what is important for quality of life. But it's critical that, uh, just because you're, you're not seventy-five and retired that you can't serve on this board of commissioners. I think Nathan and I, just the youngest folks up here, can do it just as good as the oldest.
Thank you. I'm not so sure about that. Betsy Willoughby. There are advantages to being old.
I've had several people ask me, because I am the paralegal for the Johnson County attorney, "Am I going to continue to do that job and be a county commissioner?" The answer is no. I can't work for myself. So, if I were elected, I would transition out so that the county attorney would not be left in a lurch. But I expect this to be a full-time position. I'll treat it as such. You all deserve that. I don't have other interests. I don't have business interests. I don't have. I do have personal interests with my son, John, family, and my parents who are getting older. But for the most part, I would be a hundred percent committed to the job, just like I'm a hundred percent committed to the one I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Rich Hall.
I'm pretty confident Nate could do it. Uh, um, I consider myself a high-tech older guy. But there's a variety of tools out there to, uh, help with time management. I'm a Google Plus user. I collaborate with documents and spreadsheets on Google Drive, Google Docs. Uh, I, uh, work real-time with my foreman on Google Hangouts. So, uh, the old days of jumping in the car and driving forty-five miles to talk to a person about an issue, those, those are probably gone. And there's other ways to get that work done now.
Thank you. All right. Nathan, your rebuttal.
First of all, I appreciate the, uh, the kind words and the offers of support. And, uh, there again, this is tough. You folks in this county deserve the best that you can get. That's one thing, growing up here, I certainly appreciate all that this county has given to me. And that's part of what grew me here, is to try to give back something. If nothing else, I wanted to maybe, uh, uh, give a little different perspective, a little different sign on this campaign. And I think I'm doing that. But, uh, time management, it's, it, it's a tough one. And I admit, uh, I might have the least time up here. But, uh, there again, that's for you folks to decide. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Rich Hall, you're up. The county is in the process of creating a long-term capital facilities improvement plan. How would you specifically prioritize those capital improvements? And why? Ninety seconds.
Um, again, uh, that's where I'm coming from. Uh, I'm a, I'm a long-term guy. Uh, I'm an asset management, uh, individual. And, uh, the first part of that is to inventory the assets that the county has. Where are our buildings? Where are our roads? Uh, do we need those buildings? Are there some that could be, uh, turned in, back into the private, uh, industry? Uh, so you, you, you inventory them and then you give them a grade. And what condition are they in? So that while you're building that, you're letting the system prioritize, uh, your buildings and your roads, uh, for you. So that you just walk through the process and that, uh, it, it's not a magical thing. There's a lot of work and a lot of, uh, uh, thought that goes into it. But if you have a, a solid long-range plan, a vision, a strategic plan on where you wanna go, uh, those individual buildings and roads will fall in.
Thank you. Number one again.
Last time, though.
You don't have to say it.
You know, uh, Rich, I appreciate what you're saying because I think you bring some things that maybe haven't been brought forth. And, and, and that capital facilities, uh, improvement list is, is a working list. Needs to be worked on every day, all the time, um, the way it is now. Each department sends their priorities in. Then we try to list those out. And then, and then we sit down and discuss them with each department and among ourselves to see where we think the things that need to be done. And then, once again, if they're very big things, it, it's came toward, it needs to go on the ballot to be decided by the constituents and not the commissioner. And I'm tickled to death to do that. Um, let, let the people decide those big ones like that, so. Uh, but I, Rich, I think you bring some good ideas.
Thank you. Gerald Fink.
I think Rich probably outlined, uh, that approach rather well. It has to do with, with planning. Um, I also see the, the decision-making process entering in there. You gather information. You analyze the information. You make decisions. In that collect information phase, I would see that involving input from people that specifically were affected by a particular facility. Uh, people from within the, the community, the county. We need to collect information and input from them, be it survey or, in some cases, it might be vote.
Thank you. Dawn Paulson.
When it comes to the menial maintenance task of the county, again, you empower people to do what they were hired to do and you trust them to do their jobs. But when it comes to major expenditures of the county, that's your say. It should always be on the ballot. You guys should always have the vote. Really, the pressure shouldn't be put on three guys or three guys or one guy and two ladies. I don't know. But the pressure, really, it should be your vote. It should be your voice that decides those big expenditures. The library, the YMCA, all those things should be your vote, not ours.
Thank you. Linda Greenham.
Dawn is right. Those big expenditures need to be on the ballot so that people can vote yea or nay on them. And Rich, as far as inventory checks and condition checks, that's a great idea. And ironically, a couple weeks ago at one of the meetings, the clerk came in and said, "Our insurance company wants us to inventory everything and have condition checks." And evidently, that was her job because everybody turned to look at her. So it's already being done as we speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Lavalle.
Well, the key words within the question are long-term planning, which is what we've got to do. We've got to take a look at wants versus needs of the county and focus on the actual needs. It's critical that we do those inventories. We should know, uh, what every vehicle, right down to every computer in the county's inventory. Prioritize, uh, most pressing down to the least and reserve some money for those unforeseen contingencies because there's always gonna be something- contingencies, because there's always going to be something that comes out of the blue, a need for a new door, and then a building that we thought we already paid for, you name it. But the bottom line there is long-term planning and prioritization of expenditures.
Thank you.
Planning is very important in this. Infrastructure is one of the things that really has to be looked at, and I'm talking about building infrastructures, but also equipment, heavy equipment, all the different departments. There should be an inventory of everything. They should all be tagged as assets. And as that happens, as Rich said, as time goes on, after you have them all tagged and categorized, then they just begin to fall into place. You can get software that will send you a note that says, you know, something's up for replacement. I really think that planning for large expenditures is very necessary, and as Bill said, things jump out of the woodwork every once in a while. So there has to be a little bit of money set aside for something like that.
Thank you.
Planning is important, and part of that planning, I think, has to conclude, what is the purpose of these projects? What goals are going to be maintained? Who will benefit? Who's going to pay for it? You know, spending other people's money is a daunting, easily corruptible and dangerous proposition. I think you have to be real careful with it. As far as specifics with any long-term capital project, what is projected cash flow? Why can't the private industry, why can't private businesses take it? If they don't want it, is it going to be because it's a liability? And if that's the case, then why should the government be able to? If it's going to continue to cost money? There again, I go back to the, what I believe the government's purpose is, is to solely protect from violence and fraud. Anything more than that takes way more than it gives to taxes.
Thank you very much. I'm Rich.
It's hard to fight when they all agree. But I've talked a lot about planning, but I've actually done some, a lot of long-range planning and little of strategic planning, and I'm ready to get to work on that. Because you can talk about long-range plans and strategic plans all you want, but you have to do the work. You know, and the first step is to involve the public. You know, have some town hall meetings and get the feel from you folks where you want this county to go, so that we can get that picture in our mind upfront and start filling in the pieces below there after that.
Thank you very much. And thank each and every one of you for being here tonight. Thank you for being here tonight, and thank you, Rob, and everybody else. All right.
But John doesn't have to go first.
I like that. I'll bet John likes that, too. Now, everybody at this point has one minute occasional closing statement, and I think Rob's right. I think we start with Rich Hall. You get to be last, John Gibbs.
I'm not going to stand up here and tell you I'm any better than these folks up here with me. I'm definitely not worse, but I'm different. My background is totally different. I have a ton of real-world experience. I have served on the board for eight years. I know board governance. I know board leadership. Through my work, I've developed relationships with almost every local governmental agency, a ton of private contractors. I don't just know those folks to say hi on the street. I've worked on projects with the Forest Service, with the BLM, with the DEQ. I know the nuts and bolts of what they do and how we interact, and I think that would be of value to Johnson County, and I would appreciate your support on the 19th. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Excuse me. Thank you all for coming, and thanks to Bulletin for putting this on. It's a real good thing, and thanks for moderating. You know, going back, I guess I go back to describe myself as a constitutional conservative. The Constitution was made not to govern us, but to limit the amount of governance upon us. And I know I keep harping on that, but it's important. It specifically spells out the amount of power that the federal level has. That means that we here at the county, and we here close to the slowest level of government, have certain authority and responsibility. We need to be cognizant of that and recognize it. There are lots of issues coming up. I think we need to beware of spending. One thing I wanted to bring up, capital improvements, whatnot, property taxes in past 15 years have nearly doubled. That's a trend that's unsustainable, that will come back to bite us, I think.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all for coming. I have also real-world experience. I have worked in several of our wonderful states here in the United States, in different cities. I have worked in a multinational corporation, where I've worked in several foreign countries. And all of that taught me a lot about communication, understanding business from all sorts of different viewpoints. I am conservative. I don't believe that the money that we spend is ours, it's yours, and I would be very, very careful about how your money is spent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you to the Bulletin, the moderator, my fellow candidates up here, and all of you for coming out tonight. I think that if you look at my resume, the qualifications that I bring to this job, from handling very, very complex federal issues, managing multimillion-dollar budgets, dealing with staffing issues, you name it, the relationships that I can bring as your county commissioner from the federal delegation right down to the county commissioners across the state, that's the leadership that can be put to work on day one on your behalf. I'm proud to be a fourth-generation Johnson County native. I'm proud to be involved in the agricultural industry. I'm proud of the small business that I'm running from here. I will work hard each day for you with the most honesty and integrity for you, serving as your commissioner, listening each day, working hard. I appreciate your vote. You can actually start voting today. Go in and see Vicky at the courthouse, or cash your ballot on August 19th. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have business experience. My husband and I owned a large business. And I'm beginning to sound like a broken record. I want big expenditures on the ballot for the people to approve. And then, whether they've been voted for or against, I'd like the commissioners to follow the dictates of the voters. I'd like us to be able to stick to a slimmer budget. We haven't talked about zoning tonight. I think we need to be very careful with that. And I will treat everybody with courtesy and respect. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
A fairy tale is a meta or an untrue story to make a point. And I think as a country, and even as a people, we've bought into the fairy tale that government is a building over there, and that's where all the money is. You're the government. You're the people that have the power to vote for whoever you want up here, and you know what? It's an amazing gift that our forefathers gave us. Arlene and I have lived here for 30-some years. I hope that we build trust in this community and trust with many of the familiar faces I see out there. We've raised our kids here, their whole lives, basically. We're starting to raise our grandkids here. And as I look out and see many of your faces, they're familiar.
Thank you very much.
And I have one more to say.
Thank you.
Talk to me later.
Okay, thank you, folks, again, for your time. Just a quick summary, I guess. I feel like my experience in Johnson County, working with agricultural groups, working with natural resource management, all across the county, serving on boards, I've been involved in many boards over the years. I have the skill to develop collaboration and cooperation among groups. I think those are things that will serve the county well. I think my history shows dedication to service, dedication to the county. Again, I consider myself fiscally conservative. I will guard spending cautiously. We need to watch out for things that start out as a single project and then become a fixed [inaudible].
Thank you very much. And John Gibbs. Not number one, but number eight.
I've got this written. It's 58.46 seconds. Thank you to the folks involved in putting together this opportunity for the candidates to vote for their funds to you, the residents of Johnson County. I cannot put into words the pride I have living in this area, this state, and mostly this fine county. I hope I have contributed to the best of my ability, all I have a theme, to make this a better place to live, a great place to work, an environment that enhances the education of our children, and the right to enjoy your life to its fullest in my last four years as one of your county commissioners. We have our disposal, good healthcare, wonderful education possibilities, superb recreational prospects, respectable job openings, and as fine and laid conditions as found about anywhere in the universe. With what you've heard today and whatever other due diligence you do while making your decision on who to vote for, I would like to let you know that the county commissioners are looked upon as the people's choice, or the people's voice to the next step up to state and federal officials. I have good working relationship with state and federal officials that are presently holding these offices. Please give me, John Gibbs, a strong consideration when you make this important decision.
Thank you very much.
Very briefly, I want to thank all of the candidates, not only for showing up this evening, but for running. It takes a great deal of courage to run a public office, and so I think all these people deserve a [inaudible]. Please, thank you, Martin, for your kind work, and thank you all for attending.
See you next Monday.